Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular city council meeting of Wednesday, January 17th, 2024. Let the record show all councillors are present except for councillor Bayless. Adds and deletes, we have license permits number 10, number 11, and number 12. Could I have approval of the agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Schweber.
Support.
Support by councillor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Move on to approval of minutes. Prove the minutes of the reorganization on regular Hibbing City Council meeting of January 3rd, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Whitney.
Support.
Support by councillor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Prove the minutes of the Hibbing City Council workshop meeting of January 3rd, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Schweber.
Support.
Support by councillor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Move on to the consent agenda. Number one, approve accounts payable dated 1/12/2024, checks number 176388 through 176486 in the amount of $748,882.28. Prove the city payroll for pay period ending 12/29/23, checks number 168884 through 168888 in the amount of $631,545.65. Number three, request for approval of dress for your day policy for the Hibbing Public Library. Four, authorize the hire of Gunner Atkins Atkins for the paid-on-call firefighter with the Hibbing Fire Department pending pre-employment contingency. Five, authorize the hire of Spencer Harnessman for the full-time firefighter EMT with the Hibbing Fire Department pending pre-employment contingencies. Six, authorize the hire of Blaine Fleetwood for full-time firefighter EMT with the Hibbing Fire Department pending pre-employment contingencies. Seven, approve the advancement of Ashley Johnson to Patrol 2 with the Hibbing Police Department effective January 18th, 2024. Eight, approve the advancement of Rachel Sheik to Investigator 2 with the Hibbing Police Department effective January 18th, 2024. Nine, approve the updated library aide job description. Ten, approve the updated records management job description effective January 18th, 2024. Eleven, authorize Milliman to prepare the valuation of city post-employment benefit program, OPEB, for the first fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023, and December 31st, 2024, in the amount of $14,000. Approve the update twelve, approve the updated office support technician job description effective January 18th, 2024. Thirteen, authorize the implementation of the Parks Community Project Request process. Fourteen, accept and place on file the Hibbing Police Department Activity Report for the month of December, 2023. Fifteen, set the next regular meeting for Wednesday, February 7th, 2024, at 5:00 PM in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chamber. Sixteen, set the next city council workshop for Wednesday, February 7th, 2024, following the regular meeting in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chamber. Previously approved, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the 119th Annual Hibbing Chamber Dinner on Friday, January 26th, 2024, at the Androy by Boomtown. This time wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by councillor Hoffman-Sockman. Support?
Support.
Support by councillor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. We'll move at this time on to public forum, and we do have two requests. Uh, just, uh, so you know it's a five-minute limit, so basically we can listen to what you have to say, but we can't make any decisions on anything. It's more of a listening session so that you can come before the council and express your concerns. So at this time, I'll ask Chris Campbell first, and if you'd please state your name and your address, and at the time I will start your time. Thank you for coming to force.
My name is Chris Campbell, 12384 Old Highway 169, and I'm this first opportunity I've ever had to talk to any of you, um, but for a good reason. I'm looking for a boundary commission. It's not something that's been common, uh, but it is a wheel that exists, a tool that can be used to rectify some issues that I'm having on my property. And so has seven others, just to begin with, along a long stretch of that roadway. Uh, so the issues are, we have legal descriptions that do not represent boundaries understood by the homeowners or property owners. Some descriptions, when applied by a land surveyor, the property lines go through homes and buildings. Title searches are not showing issues, putting owners to banks at risk. Taxes are being collected and do not represent real asset of the people that are paying their taxes. Uh, the potential loss regarding valuations to possible sales issues that are created because of it. May not be able to sell my home if I can't prove I own it, or if there's some documentation that says that I own the neighbor's property, which is, in fact, my specific issue as it relates to many issues here. Uh, lawsuits, uh, they're great for lawyers and good for your, you know, for the court system. It's not good for your constituents, especially, uh, when we get some judgments that seem to be based on disregarding facts, no expert opinions, no precedents, um, again negatively affecting your constituents. So established legal expenses, uh, so far as one property line has been about $40,000 was spent. To come up with something that I've never seen before, and I have 10 years in land surveying as a kid, so I was like a little sponge working for my father's company down in Wisconsin from eight to 18 before I went in the Marine Corps. So I've never seen anything like it. And, uh, most of the surveyors today probably aren't pulling old stones from a guy that came through a surveyor with a horse and a donkey and rolled a rock over to put an X in the, in the, in the rock. And those are experiences that I had, so I saw a lot of issues that were created because of those original surveys. So I do have experience and understanding of how this can be rectified, and that boundary commission can fix this. I'm not familiar with exactly how that would function, but I do know that back in 06, there was a lawyer and a neighbor who actually had surveyors come in and they made the lines all fit for everyone. The problem was, I think, more than anything, was probably the $2,500 that a lot of people couldn't afford necessarily, or some people are like, it's not a problem, kick it down the road, I don't want to deal with it. There are serious problems with having these legal descriptions so far off. This can be rectified. Uh, there is a map that's been produced, or lawyers or homeowners were involved in it in the past, and so I'd like you guys to think about that because I'm probably going to be bugging you more often as we go here, see if we can't get some meetings or something and discuss this further so that we can rectify the problem, especially now that I know that there's a way to do it. So, um, my information is now out there, so is my phone number, so if anybody has a question, please contact me. And, uh, if you don't get a hold of me, leave me a message, you can even text, text message me, I'll get back to you soon. All right, thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions myself. I had, I had heard a little bit about it, um, just to enlighten some others that don't know, and from the information I was given, like you said, I mean, just so we all understand that there's legitimately houses if they, if they were to, it's gonna be a snowball effect where one person is affected, has to go down the hill, and we're gonna have houses that are legitimately at somebody else's property. I mean, is it, is, is...
Yes, um, some of these houses have lines that go right through them, if you were to use the legal description, and I, and these do get messed up, this goes back in history. 40 and 50s, and you had a surveyor guy, everybody knew how to go out and figure out their own property lines, they didn't have registered land surveyors or registered surveys. So, uh, you have lines that go through people's homes, uh, lines that, that don't make sense when you just look at them, they're, they certainly don't represent adverse possession as though we've all had, we've got our fences and we've mowed our lawns all these years. I mean, 50 years of this has been going on. Um, to have somebody spend, uh, you know, $40,000 to figure out a property line when you've been mowing a lawn or using stuff, it's pretty ridiculous. Um, when you get down to my property, which is six down from the last disputed property line, we literally, uh, own the neighbor lady's property, it'd be Kattula's property. According to the legal description and the survey, that's what it says. So I'm not sure how, how we're gonna rectify this in the end without some kind of help from you guys, um, other than a bunch of lawsuits that don't really go anywhere, and by, like I said, by the time you get to my house, I literally own the neighbor's house. How do you fix that? I'm not really sure yet. I mean, obviously I'm gonna have to figure it out, but we're definitely gonna look for some help, and we're not just talking about six homes here when it comes down to it. We could, this would be a good test, figure out how to do this and apply this boundary commission, so that in the future when you have people that are coming in, I don't know what to do, you guys would be superheroes and just fix it, because you already know, you just take that stamp back out and apply it, and it can fix everybody else's. This is going on, the entire length of 169, on both sides of the road. Um, how drastically these, these lines or faulty descriptions are impacting people, I'm not sure at this point, but I'm coming to an understanding that this isn't just a old highway 169 problem, there are lots of properties that, that are affected because of this kind of situation. In Wisconsin, if I was to buy a property, they'd require that I had a land survey. They did this in the 80s because they were fixing these things. We've never, nothing like this has been applied in Minnesota, or at least up here, by the way I know, so.
Uh, I, I can't say I've ever heard of this. I know the area you're talking about very well because I grew up just west of there.
Yeah.
The other side of Townline Road, not Townline Rainy Road.
Yeah. So. I haven't checked, I'm sure if I just keep driving like this around there, the area, I'm gonna continue to find this. If people are going to be, I'm not gonna, I'm not trying to stir that pot yet. I think it would be really advantageous to, to apply this thing that already exists, though I'm not familiar with it. Apply it, make everybody happy, work out the little issues between properties, there may be some of us are gonna have to give and take a little bit, right? Um, but to figure that stuff out so that it's gonna be applied in the future, and get everything just tied up at some point, you know, everybody's trying to make things better, and that's part of what you guys do too, you know, that's why we have this, the, the water system down there and everything else, so. Any more questions, then?
Chris, I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Information you brought in.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, uh, Charles Sterlinger, and again, state your name and, and, uh, address.
Hi, I'm Charles Sterger, I live at, uh, 12368 Old Highway 169. Uh, Mr. Campbell did a pretty good job there, most of what, uh, we got going on or whatever. Um, I guess, uh, we had, I had a dispute with my one neighbor is what kind of started this whole mess. Um, his legal description ends up going through the center of my house and most of what I have mowed, mowed and maintained since I was eight, nine years old, I bought the property from my parents. Um, the judgment that they entered ends up drawing a line down the one side of my property that we've always used, and then cuts across back to what's legally described as ours on the abstract for the property, and where that puts me is reclaiming what's legally mine on the opposite side from the opposite neighbor, and that's fine because it's just a small little strip or whatever that they're onto my property, but then when you apply that same judgment to all these other properties, you end up with these properties down where Mr. Campbell lives, where you're gonna have one piece of property up by the road and a separate piece out behind your neighbor that you have no access between the two. So now what's, what does this mean for our property values? What does this mean for how we've been taxed for the last, how many years now? And I mean, I'm, I've spent, I don't even know how much money on all this, I mean, I'm nearing, nearing $30,000, and I'm told appeal is gonna be another $10,000 to $20,000. And it's just, it's crazy to me that there isn't a better solution where that fixes this for everybody that's involved. I mean, it shouldn't come down, I mean, and I've tried to argue it in a way that's amicable for every, all the rest of my neighbors. I mean, I could have just laid over at the start of this and been like, oh yeah, that's all yours, whatever, I, I'll take what's mine from the neighbor and I'll kick the can down the road to them. But that's not right to me, that's not the right way to take care of these problems. And the state law is 46579 that details what this boundary commission is and what's involved with creating it, and it would involve some land surveyors and lawyers and some council people to come in and make a decision or recommendation to the courts to try and fix all of these properties as a group, and I think that it's an excellent solution for everybody that's involved here. And I, I made a couple Facebook posts earlier in the year about this, asking if, you know, other people around town had similar issues, and I had quite a few people reach out to me that were like, oh yeah, it'd be great if there was a better way than spending $5,000 on a survey and $7,000 to $20,000 on a lawyer to argue with my neighbor, you know, like, it's just not, it's not conducive to any of us living next to each other, you know, I mean, it's, uh, pretty outrageous if you ask me, I guess, I don't know. I probably would have never bought the place, I would have moved right out of this town if I didn't know when I was gonna be in this mess, you know, I mean, it's, I'm at the point now where I've spent, uh, well, like I said, almost $30,000 and another $10,000 to $20,000 to appeal this, my property is only worth $57,000, and this only fixes one side of the property. Like, where does this leave me? I'm left with a piece of property that I now have double what it's worth into it? Like, I, it's outrageous to me, so I, I, I hope that we can, I'd, I'd really appreciate if we could figure out some sort of solution for everybody involved, if there's any way that we can get that going, that'd be great. And I left my number here, and I spoke with councillors Fossil and Schweber and Whitney at length the other night, I think I was on the phone with the chief, and I greatly appreciate your time. And, uh, Andy Borland is somewhat aware of what's going on out there here, had represented one of the parties that was involved in this when the can was kicked down the road in 2006, and initially when I had started this mess, we talked a little bit about it, he has a fair amount of knowledge as to what's going on with all this, so I, I would think this would be a fairly easy thing to figure out, you know, but I think that's all.
Charles, I appreciate, uh, you know, both you and Chris bringing this forward, you know, I mean, it's first ever.
Yeah. And I came in one other time and I talked to, um, I'm terrible with names, uh, Pat Green is at, at the zoning, and, uh, I kind of brought up what was going on and I asked him, you know, is there anything that can be done, and he's like, well, no, you're kind of left to argue with your neighbor through lawyers, and it's like, well, that doesn't seem right to me, and then, I mean, I've got more hours than I care to admit into researching laws and reading how all this stuff works and what's all involved with all of it, and that's where I came across this statute that gives the opportunity for city council or the county or whoever, municipality that is the governing body over us to establish this boundary commission and take care of it. So that's what we're here to ask for.
Well, I, I appreciate you bringing that forward and, and educating us on your issue, and, uh, we can't, as I mentioned earlier, we can't make decisions here, but it was a very interesting conversation that we just listened to, so. And we will discuss it as a council.
All right, and I've got my phone number on my information here, you can give me a call if you have any further questions or want to ask anything else, or I got court file numbers and surveys and all kinds of fun stuff everybody can look at, and, I mean, if you look at the County Land Explorer, it even shows on there where it almost looks like it straightens out, but the one, there's two properties that are side by side and they're both owned by the same person, and once you apply that, now each of these people's houses on the next person's property, that's, but, thanks for your time.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it, both of you for being here. We'll move on at this time, uh, to the Ellers presentation, and at this time I'll turn it over to you, Finance Director, Ms. Mullner.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Um, Nick Ann Hutt is joining us this evening from Ellers to give a bond pre-sale presentation regarding our upcoming bond issue to finance equipment. Following the presentation, I will offer Resolution 24-01-02 to move forward with the sale of $2,130,000 of GEO Equipment Bonds Series 2024-8. So I would like to welcome Nick to the podium for the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council, Nick Ann Hutt from Ellers and Associates. We are, uh, public municipal advisors advising cities and counties across the state of Minnesota, helping them with their capital financing needs. I'm happy to be here to talk about a, uh, upcoming bond sale on behalf of the city, and I do have a presentation that I'll bring up on the screen. This bond sale is identified to finance the purchase of various capital equipment, uh, some of which the city has purchased and will be reimbursing those expenditures and then others that are upcoming. Uh, the items are listed here on the slide, uh, include, you know, public safety equipment, a grader, dump trucks, and even some of the sewer enterprise, uh, equipment. Uh, the bonds will be a mechanism to spread out these costs over a period of time and the useful life of this equipment and the various terms that you intend to use them, using predominantly a tax levy as well as some of the revenues generated from the sewer enterprise that the city operates. So the city does have bonding authority, uh, for capital equipment under two different sections of state statute. Uh, the first one is called equipment certificates, and under that authority, a city in the state of Minnesota can authorize debt for capital equipment as long as it is under a certain threshold based on the size of tax base that you represent. This amount is below that threshold as you do represent a fairly sizable tax base, and that debt does also apply to your, uh, net debt limit that is also established by statute, and you have ample authority under that limitation because of the small amount of debt that you do have on your books, as well as, uh, that limit is also set based on your, uh, tax base that you represent, and so over 32 million of potential debt, so I'm not saying that you're gonna utilize that, but potentially have the authority to go up to that amount under the limitation. Um, the second section of statute is under chapter 44, in operation of the sewer enterprise, you are able to finance capital costs associated with, uh, the upkeep, upkeep of that system as long as you're gonna pledge to use revenues from that enterprise to pay for that portion of the debt, and so the vector truck will be financed and paid for under, uh, the sewer revenues that you collect. Interest rates certainly climbed over the course of the last year, and ever since the, uh, some of the measures that the Federal Reserve was taking to keep rates low after the pandemic, uh, they kind of let loose on that last year, and rates have gone up, but I'll be happy to say that over the course of the last quarter, we've seen a lot of that subside as they've kind of paused their increases on rates and the market has reacted. This slide just shows some indices, uh, on where rates have trended over the course of the last year. You see they spiked, uh, in November of last year, and they've come down considerably and in some, in some cases below points that we saw even a year ago, and so, uh, the, the orange bar in the middle of the slide represents kind of the average over the period, and we are below that, uh, at this time, below 3.65 is the, uh, the indication on here. The city has a prominent credit rating with Standard and Poor's, a double A rating, that's the third highest, uh, rating that that agency, it's a third party that kind of evaluates cities, corporations, even sovereign governments like the United States. Um, they saw to it that the city's credit, its ability to repay its debt obligations is among the highest that it does rate. Uh, this would place, this credit rating places you in the top 40th percentile, I'd say, of all municipalities across the country, so the thousands and thousands of cities and counties across the country, uh, which are at the higher end of the risk or the, of the scale. Um, that credit rating allows you access to the public markets and the ability to generate, uh, what we think will be favorable bids on the financing. Using some very basic and conservative estimates for where interest rates are, uh, we do think that this, uh, will price at a 3.65 percent, that's, uh, the full interest cost calculation over the 10 years of the full repayment of this financing. What that would equate to is essentially a, a $273,000 levy in the first years when the majority of that equipment is being amortized, and then that will be lowered over time. And then a $80,000 contribution from the sewer, uh, revenues in order to pay for that vector. Um, the city council has already identified within its levy that is being collected in 2024, $280,000, which will more, that provide more than enough coverage, uh, to make the first year's payment on these bonds, and so we do anticipate because of the estimates, uh, that you'll be able to lower those levies, uh, in future years. Um, that levy contribution again would step down after the initial five years, uh, as the majority of that equipment would have already been paid off by then to just about $105,000, and then would be down to $64,000 in the final years, eight through 10, based on these estimates, and we hope that these are conservative and that we will outperform this, uh, when the bids are received on the bonds. I'd be happy to address any questions of the council, but tonight, uh, there is a decision to, to go ahead and move forward with this type of financing, and next steps, staff is , and will help Ellers to prepare various offering documents. We will have another discussion with Standard and Poor's to update that credit rating, which we will believe that they will uphold. Um, and then we will solicit bids on behalf of the city and present those to you all again on February 21st, and allow you the decision whether or not to move ahead and accept the lowest proposal and lock in the rates and terms that are proposed under that competitive bidding process. If the council chooses at that point in time to move forward, we would anticipate, uh, closing on the financing on March 14th, which is when the winning bidder will, uh, purchase the bonds, they'll wire in the funds into the city's account to reimburse your prior expenses and then to, uh, to make the remaining purchases on that equipment. So there is a resolution put before the council to, uh, move ahead, uh, with this financing, and we'd certainly recommend that you do so, we do think that the, uh, not only is, is the financing feasible within the, uh, budget that you have already established, uh, for these bonds, but the timing looks like it is good, uh, to move ahead and the market will reciprocate. Be happy to address any of the council's questions, but thank you for having me.
Yeah, I explained, I really enjoyed the explanation of where our city sits financially. Nice to see, I mean, we felt we were sitting good, but it's nice to hear other opinion regarding that, and able to give us an opportunity for, I mean, our needs. Anybody else have, yes, councillor.
So just to be clear here, um, thank you for your presentation, first of all. So we are sitting at a double A now, and if we adopt this resolution, we're assuming to be a double A when it, that's...
Correct. We're going to have to, uh, approach Standard and Poor's again and allow them to update their analysis, so they haven't had a discussion with the city in, in about two and a half years since the last time there was a public offering of bonds. Um, so they can certainly change their minds, it's their, their opinion on the credit rating, but we see no indication whatsoever. Tax base has grown, a lot of the financial ratios are either improved or the same as that last evaluation, and so, um, we think that they'll, they'll stand by that double A rating.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions, councillors? At that, hearing none, I appreciate, uh, your presentation, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sheena, uh, at this time, go ahead.
I'd like to offer then Resolution 24-01-02, providing for the sale of $2,130,000 of General Obligation Bonds Series 2024-8.
Okay, hearing the presentation tonight and the request by Ms. Mullner, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Fossil.
Support.
Support by councillor Hildebrand. Any other discussion by the council? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Thank you so much. We'll move on to, again, to, uh, Finance Director, Treasurer, Sheena Mullner.
Thanks, Mayor. Item A, I am offering Resolution number 24-01-03, adopting the 2024 fee schedule, which would be effective February 1st of 2024. Uh, the city doesn't currently have an all-inclusive list scheduling all of our fees, so this will collect all those city fees into one list. It will be reviewed at a minimum annually and in the interim as needed. Um, I'm open for any questions or comments on the schedule, otherwise I'm asking for council consideration and action we had previously discussed at our last workshop meeting.
Yes, we did. So at this time, uh, I'll look for support, offering resolution, adopting our fee schedule effective February 1st, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by councillor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any other discussion? And this was, as you mentioned, was in our last working session, and we had a chance to review this before this meeting tonight, so, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Thank you. Move on to, uh, Mr. Borling.
Mayor, members of the council, uh, at our last working session, you discussed, uh, potentially making some changes with regard to calendar parking, uh, as to timing and location and so forth, and reviewing our ordinances and the state parking statutes, uh, resolution, uh, resolutions like this affecting our parking are done after a public hearing, so... So within your packet this evening, or else you just got it passed out now, it's in my packet, there's a resolution calling for a public hearing. The public hearing would be set for your second meeting in February, February 21st, and we publish this in the paper at least 14 days before that hearing, if you want to proceed with that. And the, the resolution is addressed exactly the way the committee that, that September and the chief were on, put it together.
Okay. So at this time, you're just informational sake?
Resolution calling for the public hearing.
Okay. All right. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Support?
Support.
By Counselor Swyberger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Andy. Move on to administrative report. Mr. Prasinski.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. One item from my office this morning, or this afternoon, I should say. And it's supposed to be for our residents at home. City Council, I know that you've read this on the agenda, but we will be workshopping with our city council our alley pavement plan. I want to point that out to our residents simply because that's a hot button topic here and hitting. So we're trying to get our arms around what that pavement plan looks like, some funding sources and whatnot, but the point being is we'll be workshopping that and then we'll have that conversation when it comes to city council for adoption. So with that, I would turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that information. At this time, we'll move on to, unless anybody has any other questions, Ms. Prasinski? Okay, then we'll move on to bids and quotes, and we'll start with City Engineer, Mr. Story.
Mayor, console, the first item here is a heater for the alum building at the treatment plant. The current heater's been in there well over 20 years, and we need to replace that. Low quote was from Mike's Heating and Sheet Metal in the amount of $3,579, and I'm asking for council approval.
Okay, we're looking for support for a new heater for, this was for which building?
The alum building at the treatment plant.
Very good. ALB, building at the treatment plant. Wish to the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Swyberger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. P, Jesse?
Mayor, console, the Linkwist Road lift station is the next lift station on our five-year rehabilitation plan. What we're, what we've been doing is we've been putting flight pumps with VFD pumps, variable frequency drive pumps, in the lift stations. This creates uniformity within the lift stations. So this lift station is next on the list. The cost for the rehabilitation is $87,349.40 through electric pump. This is a budgeted item for 2024. The budget was $95,384, so this did come in under budget, and I'm asking for council approval.
Okay, we're looking for support for rehabilitating the Linkwist Road Lift Station. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. C, Jess?
Mayor, console, next up is the Masabi Pines Lift Station upgrades. The Masabi Pines Lift Station was installed about 14 years ago with Barnes pumps. We get roughly two to three calls a month to these pumps. They, they constantly cut out, they get plugged up. So what we like to do is change those pumps out for, with flight pumps, with the guide rails and new piping within the lift station. This is a budgeted item. The cost for this is $50,172.75 from electric pump. We are about $800, $900 over budget. Budget was $49,239, and I'm asking for council approval.
Okay, we're looking for support for rehabilitation of lift station Masaba Pines. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Jesse, one question I have, how many more are there? Where are we at with lift stations that need to be rebuilt?
We currently have 18 lift stations, and I believe we're at 13 have been rebuilt. So we're, we're getting really close.
Good. And Kelly Lakes was a total rebuild, right?
Yes, that was a total wet well, total rebuild of that lift station.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. D, Jesse?
Mayor, console, attached is a quote from McQueen for 95-gallon sanitation containers. Back in September, we did, the council approved the purchase of 301 cans. They're just starting to get to the build of those cans. We're currently sitting around 90 cans that we have to replace, so we'd like to increase that order to 427 cans. The reason that number is like that is that is a full truckload of cans. That's as many as we can get on a truck. With these cans, with the sanitation apartment, we're looking to do some upgrades, and one of those upgrades is adding a chip installed in each can, and then eventually we'll add scanning equipment to the, to the truck. So every time we dump the can, it'll scan it. That chip will be tied to each address and each homeowner, so we know how many times we dump that can. The cost to install that chip in each can is about $1.50 per can. So we'll add to the 301 that we already ordered. We'll, we'll increase that to 427 cans with a difference of $9,454.16 from the original quote of $24,549.99. So it'll be a total cost of $34,415.15 out of the sanitation budget, which we already approved purchasing 301 of those, so asking for council approval to make that purchase.
All right, we're looking for approval for additional cans and, and moving towards our chip process for managing. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Whitney. Any other discussion? Yes, councilor.
So is, Jesse, is the chip so that we figure out what the average lifespan of a can, a can is, or?
So looking at the sanitation department as a whole, there's some things we want to change slowly over time. To use the chips, we have to have, every residential can needs to have a chip. So we have 5,000 to 6,000 roughly cans out there. So this is just the beginning stages of that. Once we have all of the cans have a chip, then we can implement the system. So what it does, well, you know, you could, we could set the sanitation apartment up. There's a lot of people that don't dump their can every week. So if, once we do this, it'll read every time we dump that can. So you could dump your can twice a month, three times a month, four times a month, and we'll know how many times you're dumping your can, is pretty much what the process is. But we can't implement it until we have this chip reader in everybody's can. And we figured it out, it's, it's very pricey to buy 6,000 garbage cans at one time. So we're slowly getting to that point.
Okay, thank you.
So I understand the concept, but what are we doing with the information that we get?
So once we, once we read them? So looking at the process, we, eventually, we'd like to change up how we bill through sanitation. So you'd, what we're, what we'd like to move towards is you pay per dump. So if you dump four times a month versus, there's some, some elderly people, like my folks, they don't dump four times, they only have their can dumped once. So, and right now, everybody pays the same fee. So we'd like to go towards is you pay per dump. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't, the way, the way it would look, it wouldn't be an increased fee. There'd be a base fee, and then over time, you dump per month would be the new fee.
Realistically, we're overpaying now for four dump, you know, one, once a week dump? Isn't going to go up? It can only go down?
Correct.
Okay. Sounds good.
Jesse, the one question I would have is, at what point would we retrofit our trucks to handle the chip reading, and, and what will that cost be at that time?
So talking with our fleet manager, we can retrofit our current trucks to, to handle the system, and it's like $5,000, $5,000 to $6,000 to put the chip reader on the truck.
Okay.
So, once we, once we get rolling with this new system, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be a while. It's not going to happen tomorrow. Then we can look at where we're at with our trucks, with our fleet, and that, that process.
Very good. Any other discussion?
And these chips would tie each can to the proper house?
Yes, so, so currently, what we've been doing is when, when a resident's can is broken, we replace it, the serial number on that can is not tied to anything. So now when we deliver a can, that, the chip number, the serial number of the can will be tied to an address. So that's where we're gonna, how we're gonna roll this out.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any other discussion first? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Last one, E, Jess?
Mayor, console, attached is a quote from Liberty Process Equipment. This is for Mr. Hurd at the treatment plant. This is for replenish the supply of the pump parts. We've, he's currently used those backup parts that he's had, and he'd like to replenish that, keeps, so we're not offline as long when something breaks. Total cost is $11,223 plus shipping to Liberty Processing, and I'm asking for council approval.
Okay, we're looking for support parts. Our wishes of the council?
Motion. Go ahead.
Motion by Hilt, Ms., Counselor Hildebrand. Support?
Support.
Okay, support by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
We move on to, nothing for boards and commissions, we'll move on to licenses and permits. Approve the special event permit application of the Iron Range Motorcycle Club to host the motorcycle swap meet on Saturday, April 20th, and Sunday, April 23rd, 2024, at the Hibbing Memorial Building. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Swyberger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Move on to number two, approve the special event permit application of the St. Louis County to hold the Community Connect Resource Fair on Wednesday, May 22nd, 2024, at the Hibbing Memorial Building. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Three, approve the special event permit application of Victory Christian Academy to hold the Victory 5K on Saturday, April 27th, 2024, starting at the end, starting and ending at Victory Christian Academy. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Four, approve the raffle permit application request of the Iron Mining Association of Minnesota to hold their raffle on Friday, February 23rd, 2024, at the Hibbing Curling Club. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Five, approve the raffle permit application request of the Lincoln PTO to hold their raffle on Wednesday, February 14th, 2024, at the Lincoln Elementary School. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman. Support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Six, approve the 2024 massage therapy license application of Ashley Johnson, Bwana Therapeutic Massage, 208 East Howard Street. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Seven, approve the special event permit application of the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce to hold their outdoor tourism trial event at Kerry Lake on Saturday, February 24th, 2024. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Eight, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing High School trap team to hold their raffle on Saturday, May 18th, 2024, at the Hibbing Trap Club. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Nine, approve the raffle permit application request of the Blessed Sacrament Church to hold their raffle on Thursday, February 29th, 2024, at Assumption Catholic School. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Ten, approve the temporary on sale liquor license application of Boomtown to dispense alcohol at the Android on January 26th, 27th, and February 2nd, 2024. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Swyberger. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Eleven, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce to hold their raffle at the Android on Friday, January 26th, 2024. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Whitney. Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Last, number 12. Alcohol, the raffle permit application request of Hibbing Little League Incorporated to hold their raffle at the Hibbing Little League Field on Thursday, July 25th, 2024. Wishes of the council?
17.
Mayor? It's supposed to be approved.
Approved.
Oh, approving to alcohol?
Approved. Yeah, it says alcohol, I, I read it the way it was. Approve the raffle permit application request of Hibbing Little League Incorporated to hold their raffle. That sounds much better. To the Hibbing Little League Field on Thursday, July 25th, 2024. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Okay, as everyone knows, name the trucks is something the city has been doing, and so I will read, we have a list of the finalists for our city's Name a Dump Truck Contest. More than 75 people recently nominated their favorite names for our new dump trucks. City staff then narrowed it down to just 18 names. Now, as the public's turned away in, voting is now open, and it will remain open through January 31st. Check our website, hibbingmin.gov, or our Facebook page for the link to vote on your favorite. Top names will be added to the trucks. We will announce the winners in February. And the finalists are, in alphabetical order, Elvis Dumbledore, Bert and Ernie, Big Louis, Big Phil, Bobby D, Brutus and Beefcake, Bumpy the Dumpty, Dump and Dumper, Dumble Stillskin, Forrest Dump, Frank, Hibbing Heavy Holler, Joe Dirt, Bill R. Up,